We will take public comment on the single item of tonight's agenda. A little later in the presentation, but I will ask if there's any public comment on any item not on tonight's agenda. In case anyone wants to make general public comment statement. Doesn't appear to be the case, so we will move on to tonight's. Single item of business and item of new business, the fiscal year 2026 budget study session. We will consider preliminary work plans, the operating budget and the capital improvement plan. So I will ask our city manager Brian Leventhal for his initial remarks.
Members of the council, I appreciate your time this evening. As you are aware, this is. Part of a long process for developing our annual budget. And it started in January as we did in February as we did council priorities. Completed the mid-year budget update for the current fiscal year. Got councils direction on those priorities and now is the time to sort of have staff walk through. How we developed our work plans in response to the comments and the priorities that we heard from the city council. Walk through the draft operating budget at a very high level. To talk to you where we are with the budget and some difficult choices we're going to have to make. In order to balance that budget and then presenting on the CIP. And then in each of these areas, we will pause for a moment when we're complete with. That part of the presentation and allow for council comments. We anticipated taking public comments after we've presented in those three areas. And receive council comments, so there is an opportunity for public comment once we've got through those. And then, of course, looking forward at a high level after tonight, we will take council feedback. And the hard work really isn't done yet. We'll have to sharpen our pencil on all the numbers, take council direction, make revisions. And fine tune that budget to come back to you on June 3rd for a budget introduction. And again, another bite at the apple for the council to provide further direction as that budget will be much more refined. Than the discussion this evening. And then last, but not least, on June 17th, we will bring that very refined budget back to you. For consideration of adoption for the next fiscal year, so that's the process that we're in right now. So when we met with the council to discuss priorities, the council came up with the following six priorities are listed here on the screen. I'm not going to read each of them to you and you're familiar with them, I did want to highlight. The category of city infrastructure was previously measure O. But we amended that to speak to city infrastructure in general. Primarily to capture not just infrastructure, but deferred maintenance of that infrastructure and we talk about. The community center, the city assets, including city hall. And our facilities, our park restrooms and fire stations and all of those deferred maintenance. So that is now labeled city infrastructure and it encompasses not just measure O, but those other things I mentioned as well. And before I jump into it, just on those sort of basic parameters, was there any questions from the council for this evening before we get started? Okay, right, let's move on then. All right, so the way this is going to work for each of the work plan, for each of the priority areas that was highlighted to be above, you see that we color coded them. And we're going to present sort of the highlights of the, of a few significant work plan items within each of these categories. You do have. All of the work plans delineated in quite some detail is attachment B of your staff report. I think we'd be here the better part of this evening into tomorrow if we went through each and every one of those work plan items individually. So it's not to minimize the impact of all of those work plans, they are significant. But for purposes of discussion, what we're going to do this evening is have staff highlight. And sort of for you, the, the high level, larger. Work plan items within each of the priority areas. Each of the priority areas are color coded and you see here, long-term land use planning and housing is blue and sustainability is green. We've combined those two, I'm going to present on this as well with community development director Rob Eastwood on that. And so I am going to introduce my part and then I'll turn over to Rob to introduce his part. On the land use, but with regard to regulatory requirements. One of the things we wanted to highlight for the councils, there are a lot of things that we don't have options on that we still have to do in these areas. Not only state law changing with regard to housing laws and zoning laws. With regard to multifamily and below market rate housing. But we highlighted these two other areas under regulatory requirements because they're important. To the city and what we do and we spend significant effort in those areas. And I highlighted these two here, stormwater regulations through our stormwater JPA program. And the solid waste and recycling program. And there are significant things that we have to do in these areas such as install trash capture devices and storm drains. We have to track inspections of certain storm drain connections. And then, of course, with solid waste and recycling, as the council is aware, there's fraught with state regulations. With regard to diversion of waste, with regard to recycling and diverting of recycled products. But also with soil and using of. Soil that is coming out of the city as well. And so we highlight those because those are things we don't have a choice for. And I wanted to call those out to attention, Rob's going to go ahead and introduce the other items here on the screen.
Vice Mayor Fertado, council members, good afternoon, Robbie's criminal director. If you look at a work plan, there's a lot of the CD work plan, I'll keep this tight and short with three high level items. So one is looking at future in the city, planning for the future for our residents and future residents. And the three highlights out of that, of course, one is our climate action plan of looking ahead of how we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Probably more important as the climate heats up, what we can do to make our city more comfortable and more resilient to climate impacts for our community. That work is ongoing. Number two, our multimodal plan as this city continues to grow with more housing and commercial development. There's no more room in the streets to expand our system for cars. This is really a pivot to see how we can help folks who are to work here or live here, get around the city. Get on transit, get downtown, get to their houses without having to use a car, so. Trying to do deep upfront planning in that space to make this a more livable city for folks who want to use those types of ways of getting around. Finally, the Hamilton Avenue precise plan, you're well aware of, this was a top priority item out of the general plan. We're planning for about 2,000 housing units around the Hamilton 17 intersection. The problem statement is most of those units are on one side of the freeway, electronic fries is. We like those folks to have the opportunity to get on light rail or get on the other side of the freeway and over the prune yard. There's a lot of challenges with that, so we do have grant funding, 100% grant funded project. That we're starting off on to look at how to make better investments in the sidewalks, bridges, pedestrian traffic, urban design to help. That development be better integrated community. So that's in the bucket of sort of long-term planning. Second, you know, we've done deep investments into our housing programs to try and build a lot more into the city, I'm not going to go through all the detailed programs. I think we're on the cusp of getting a pro housing designation that will open up some grant funding for the city, which will help underwrite our housing programs. We are looking at building up our housing trust fund, which will help support especially affordable housing programs. And then finally, the council is aware of, you've done some investments through our ARPA funding into our unhoused programs. Or hotel voucher program, safe park program. And we're coming back to you soon on a subregional study with other four cities looking at temporary emergency shelter options for unhoused population. The third one I pulled out specifically, permit streamlining, economic and fiscal help. If you look at community development, most of our staff is dedicated to processing permits and getting folks through the process. The uniqueness of those staff is they are the, in some sense, the economic engine of new revenue growth into the city. So the faster the folks come in, get their permits, they build, faster the property is reassessed. Faster the property taxes are reassessed at a higher rate and that property tax comes into the city. Faster our businesses come in and get their TI permits and move into their spaces. Faster they open their doors and the faster that sales tax revenue comes to the city. I did want to underline, our staff is very customer service friendly. We put deep investments and they're trying to get people through that process as fast as possible. Some of the recent things we've been doing, we're trying to streamline our SEQA process, this is environmental review. In a city that's largely built out with natural resources, we're looking at ways to make that go faster. Second, I'm very proud of, I think we're 482 cities in California, I think we're the only one that has an ADU express process. You can walk in on Monday, apply for a permit and get a permit on Thursday. Most cities, you gotta wait two to four weeks and some sometimes won't, so really help people through that process. And with our new economic development manager, I'm looking at, looking at ways we can really streamline the economic development business permitting process. Knocking down CUPs where we can, making this much more a business friendly city. And a tough climate for retail and restaurants, the more we can do to invite people in to invest in businesses here and make this business friendly. It's going to be better for the city and better for our revenue. With that, those are the three highlights from community developments and we'll go for questions, although we might be moving on to the next.
Yeah, we're going to keep moving into the next area is city infrastructure. And interim public works director Amy Ole is going to cover this for us. Thank you, Amy.
Good evening. For the measure O project, as you came to city hall, you noticed that we are making a lot of good progress. On both the police operations building as well as the library renovation. But even at that, we are not complete with the project. With the library, we estimate the construction to be complete sometime in the summer. And we will coordinate with the county library to have them, you know, start moving in. And so we're looking at potentially an opening of the library sometime in the fall timeframe. And then with the police operations building, the construction of the building itself. Is anticipated to complete in the fall. And that's really the first phase, there's a second phase which involves the renovation of the downstairs city hall. And that one, we consider that to be phase two and we're looking that to be sometime in the spring of 26. Now, when all that is done, there is still the offsite improvements that we are looking at. So for instance, like the gravel lot that we have. At Grant and Harrison, we want to improve that so that we convert that for employee parking. There's a trash enclosure that will be built with that project. And we also want to look at the surrounding sidewalk around civic center on areas that we can do improvements in that. So that's the civic center offsite improvement. And then we have the measure O citizens oversight committee, that's a committee that was created to ensure. That the proceeds from the bonds are used appropriately, only, you know, as, as written by the measure O. Any questions?
I just forgot those are questions. All right, next is going to be financial stability. And I'm going to lead a little, it's actually Angelique is going to lead this discussion, do you want to come up and lead us on that? Thank you.
Good evening, so very briefly, the city manager's office will be taking the lead and is actually already taking the lead in our labor negotiations. With the bargaining groups that include CMEA, CPCEA and CARP. Because their MOUs expire at the end of this fiscal year, those are the discussions that we begin with. CPOA's MOU expires at the end of the calendar year on December 31st, 2025, so we'll also cover those in the next fiscal year. And then we would also be taking the lead in any necessary discussions with the unrepresented groups, which would include. Classified management, which are your managers, top level managers and your unclassified management, which is your executive staff. And then also the discussions with the confidential employee group as well. The city manager will also be taking the lead and is currently taking the lead on more complex employee matters. That are outside of labor negotiations that require our consultation with outside counsel. That includes your general claims as well as your workers comp claims and includes our work with LCW. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm just going to touch a little bit on economic development plan. It just one line here, but it's more important than that, as the council is aware. Trying to grow the other side of the equation being not just cutting expenses, but looking at growing revenues. And as the vice mayor introduced our new economic development manager at the beginning of the meeting. We are embarking upon as the council knows, a brand new economic development plan and implementing that this, this year. And it's going to take time to see the dividends from that, but we're really kicking that off in earnest and we have now a full-time staff member to do that. The next couple items, I'm going to turn over to staff. Oh, I'm sorry, and I missed, before I turn over to Amy, come on up, but before I turn over to you, I also wanted to cover the measure K litigation. Just for public transparency, I know this council is aware because we've discussed it. That measure K that was passed by the voters to increase the sales tax. It has been met with litigation of an individual and an organization that is challenging that litigation. And we're anticipating that could be some time before that litigation is resolved, so. Part of the issue with that is continuing to monitor that litigation, nudge it along where we can. Obviously, the city attorney's office is highly involved in that. And we don't have a lot of control over that, but really trying to move that to completion as quickly as possible. And managing that, that timeline as quickly as possible so that can get resolved, I'm sorry. And then next, Amy, do you want to touch on city assets?
Yes, with city-owned assets and facilities, we're not just talking about buildings, we also maintain our parks. And. But in regards to our building facilities, we have completed the city's asset inventory report. And which outlined recommendations on what projects that we need to embark on. It's a very costly multimillion dollar recommendation, so we really need to look at what. What are the, some of the items that we can really tackle? So for instance, like roofing projects, we have completed, you know, some roofing projects, we had done the Sunny Oaks Fire Station. We've completed a couple of roofing projects at the community center. And starting in fiscal year 27 through 30, we're going to continue with additional roofing projects, those would include. Community center, I think it's building. Building C, or no, we already did that one, but there'll be others included in the community center, but it will conclude, include the city hall roofing. As well as the club yard. And. One of the other things that we have in terms of community asset maintenance is that in the FY26 budget, we're proposing. A chunk of money to do painting for one of the buildings there. And with the street maintenance, I want to highlight the Hamilton Avenue resurfacing project. This one I had brought up during the February study session for our pavement program. And this is a multi-year project, we're excited that we're at the final stage of design. And we are packaging the plan specs and estimate that we plan to bring to council. In June for your approval so that we can start advertising and, and board the project. And this is a 2.8 mile corridor that we are, will be working on.
Right, Will?
Yes, so under, 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 under fiscal. Building, we'll, we'll also be attempting to. Go through our, our, our. Reserves plans and. Attempting to. See how, how, how they, how they be ever moved. So, so that we are able to be a. That we're able to pay for our expenses of both today. And also in, in, in the future. So, oh, how be. Going through and. Updating and. Hoping to a council changes through the legacy and. Eight tons of water hazard. Also. Coming up. New reserve options. That could help to pay for. Infrastructure expenses and also. Expenses, also our, our, our fleet and our IP. Equipment expenses. And also. To. Our plans to do a pay down our, our, our pension costs as well. But for anything that we. Do either. Changes or also to put into a place, a new hazards. We, 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 we will also need to determine. How are we able to either, either. Build up a. Or, or also to. To. What to rid down over COVID. If, if we get a good outcome on K, it, 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 it could help here. But for whatever. For, 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 however we change or adjust or. It, 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 it will also. It will also require funds. And that is it.
All right, so the next area that we're going to discuss, the council priority of community health and safety, this is going to be another team presenting. Led by our police chief Gary Berg.
Good evening, council. As you know, the police department is very operational, so our work plans are somewhat limited, but as you've heard me speak about many times before, we have a big focus on. Leveraging technology to create a safer Campbell. And really what that looks like is taking technology that's available to, to supplement our, our resources. I want to be very clear that the technology itself isn't intended to replace any of our staff members. It's really intended to enhance their efficiency and the service levels that they're able to provide. And some examples of that that we've talked about previously are the, the integration of our new real-time intelligence center. That includes our public safety cameras, license plate reader cameras, our drones and drone as a first responder program. And we're really at the, at the forefront of project, of a project like this for an agency our size and it has. Already shown signs of huge success in the last week, actually, I'll give you an example of just earlier today. We had a shoplifting suspect at, at Ace Hardware over off of Bascom Avenue. And our public safety cameras were able to identify the suspect as he was leaving with the merchandise, our drone was launched. Located him on the park horse. He ended up trying to flee from officers and the drone was able to track him and we ultimately got him into custody. Safely without incident and he's in custody and he's a known felon with prior, prior theft conviction, so. It's instances like that where we're able to take all these different pieces of data and bring them together into one place to help solve crime to, to. To really make a very difficult job a little bit easier. And it has the added benefit of really enhancing that partnership with our community and especially our, our business community. Who we are, are really leveraging that, that relationship and their willingness to, to provide that data and. Our willingness to, to be a part of the solution that their businesses are facing, so. With that, we're going to continue with an eye on, on technology, not just in the real-time information center, but with our existing systems like our computer aided dispatch system. Our property and evidence system and, and looking at the next gen 911, which is at the forefront. But that kind of segues into the second part of it, my first comment about not, that this is a supplement, not a replacement for staff. Many agencies throughout this country, especially in the Bay Area have, have had recruitment issues with related to public safety, especially police officer positions. And with council's support over the last few years, we've seen significant increases of applicants and hiring. Because of the outreach that we've been able to do, so that is an utmost priority for me because our staff. because our staffing levels have a direct impact on our service levels and keeping our community safe. So wanting to keep pushing forward with with those hirings so that we can remain staffed to provide the services that our community has come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Amy come back up. Thank you, Amy, for up and down to talk to us about Safe Streets and Neighborhood. Community Health and Safety.
Hello again. So let me start. We're talking about the traffic calming program that we have. We have on our work plan to review and consider revisions to the current neighborhood traffic calming program. And what it is, is that the current program, it involves community engagement. So if a resident or residents on a street are interested in traffic calming, they would contact the city to request for a study to be done, to be evaluated, whether they would be eligible for any of the traffic calming measures. And since the inception of the program in twenty seventeen, we've received approximately forty three requests, install speed humps on five streets and working on a sixth one, install radar speed signs on three streets, and install rectangular rapid flashing beacons at nine locations. The next item here is the Comprehensive Traffic Safety Action Plan that was brought in front of council about a month ago, where we are receiving a grant from Safe Streets for All Grants to develop, plan and identify traffic safety policies, processes and projects to reduce fatal or severe crashes on city streets. And currently staff is working on the RFP to to get a consultant on board. The next one is the Safe Routes to School Map. That's also grant funded in which we are working with four schools in Campbell, also working with partnering with Os Cadros in San Jose. These schools are Capri Elementary Village School, Forest Hill and Campbell School of Innovation. Where in each one of these schools, we'll work with the we have a consultant on board, but we're also working with the parents and the school administrators to conduct walk audits to determine if there is other safety improvements that should take place along the walk routes for the children. And then the last one here is the sidewalks, curb and gutter replacement. This is our annual program to address replacement of uplifted sidewalks, curb and gutter. But the way we pick this is very systematic in that we want to address all the zones in the city. So what we have come up with is there are sixteen zones in the city, what we call maintenance zones. So every year we try to put improvements in at least two of the zones.
Good evening, council. So the Recreation Community Services Department is launching two initiatives to go along with the community health and safety priority for the city of Campbell. Those are going to be year long initiatives with kind of partnering with local agencies and schools. Kind of one is for healthy living. And we're going to come up with an exciting name and work with our partners, Public Health Department and local school districts and things like that. So it's still in the early stages. But it aligned with the community health and safety priority for the city of council, and it also hit a number of action items assigned to the Recreation Community Services Department through the general plan. So we were kind of pairing those and staying with the drug and smoke free initiative, which was also timely with the number with the recent information on the number of shops we have in Campbell to kind of help with our youth in the community. So those are the two we'll be working, two major ones we'll be working on. Give others. Thank you.
All right, we're just moving along here. This is a priority that's this is operational or state to be because you're not any direct again, important things to highlight for the process organization, some of the things we're doing. And I'm going to cover this one. I cover several different departments though, including HR, fully training, and so about our renewed efforts, developing standardized training program, thank you, for our staff. Some of those are mandatory trainings and we do that already. We're going to continue to monitor and and track those mandatory trainings. But we're really talking about in the first item is both the technical and soft skills across the city as as people move up in the organization and become managers, identifying those skill sets and tracking those and developing training plans. And then in here, you know, we have an item about desktop computers. And I don't want to underplay that because although the item simply lists replacing of antiquated desktop computers seems simple, supporting all of our staff members in their desktops and their computer needs and updating software and apps and keeping everything running is a significant operational piece of what we do. As we started this evening, I was scrambling to get my Zoom meeting even working. And I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, what do I do if it doesn't work? So just goes to show you how important IT is to keep everything running and keep up to date equipment. And instead of replacing all of our equipment when it breaks, we do have a system to to kind of work through our existing load of computers and replace them periodically. And then along the IT area, but certainly related to HR and finance is finishing the implementation of I'm sorry, this is a city clerk. This is not that. Implementing agenda management software. And what we do to develop a council packet for you is very complex, and it takes a lot of time from the clerk's office to take all of these external reports from the departments and put them in a cohesive packet that's numerated and sorted. And you can click on the links and get to the agenda items. Our agenda software system is antiquated and that will be replaced by the corpse office this year, and it's a significant effort. Also, looking for external audit services, as we just presented the audit to the council, you're aware that we have had a long term relationship with our auditors. It's time to start looking at rotating those services. So we'll be doing that this year as well. And then last, because we didn't mention it anywhere else, Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan and Public Improvement Plans. There's a lot of things that we're doing to try to improve gateways. Hamilton Avenue is a council knows is is not just a challenge for the multiple modes of transportation, whether it's vehicles or pedestrians or bicycles, but volume of traffic. But then also merging all of those other plans with a vision for that gateway of the city is is we come off of Highway seventeen. That is a major entrance into the city. And there's some visioning that's going on with that as well. So that is it. I know we took about forty minutes of your time just to highlight sort of high level work plan items. I do want to also mention that it was probably less than a third of what we have in Attachment B for you. And that's not to minimize the the impact of those other work plans. It's it's be mindful of our time and try to highlight for you those big, big, high level items. But now would be the time to pause and take questions if you have on work plans. We'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, so we'll take questions from the council just on the work plans themselves. Obviously, we're going to get into the numbers a little bit, well, shortly after this. But any questions by members of the council on the work plans as noted or highlighted?
Yeah.
I have one question for Natasha. Regarding the healthy initiative, so refresh my memory, it seems like several years ago, we entered into an agreement with the county on some type of healthy living. Yeah, they had like six or seven different categories and you you got a star if you complied with a certain aspect of their of their plan. Is that?
I remember like the like farm to table kind of initiative that was maybe twelve to thirteen years ago. Orchard City Greens or something, I forget what it was called. About like getting fresh fruits and vegetables into homes. I don't recall that initiative.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what it was called, but I more recently I I've heard of it because it was there was a presentation done at Cities Association. Probably maybe two, three years ago. And I was just curious whether or not this program dovetails into that, if we coordinate with them, if we get resources from the county.
Yeah, so our hope is to really partner with public health. They already do a really great job of doing monthly themes and getting information out, but just kind of helping to be a better partner with public health with that and connecting with the schools and and kind of being a better segue as well as there someone had reached out to us from Second Harvest Food Bank about having like a walk up pantry kind of place as well and kind of re getting that started to get them to come because we had all set that they haven't actually started the program at our site. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, just a question. You're the we're going to get to the budget in the next section. And and just there's a couple of maybe our grants going to be covered or grant proposals going to be covered in there just because we had seen a Valley Water grant option that had been presented. And then we just got a BTA grant option presented. Any discussion on that that's coming up or or if it's not feasible, the grants don't make sense, then that's that's perfectly good answer as well, just to to be able to have a review of those grant options.
Yeah, well, we we evaluate all grant options. And some of those still may be under evaluation, to be honest with you.
The ones that I've seen are just a couple of weeks so far.
So so we'll still be evaluating those. We do look to see if they align with already city objectives. Is there great new work for us in areas that we're not already writing? And that's sort of our task.
Yeah. And it just would if you are going to pursue them, highlight it because I think as we sit on various committees, we know we might have to we might not be able to vote on it, but we can certainly have discussions.
Sure, sure. Glad to do that.
And then there was the just a question on the traffic calming. There was and I'm new to the traffic calming reproach, but there was one that was going on with Dallas Avenue. Is that still under review? Because I hadn't seen published on that.
On which one?
The Dallas Avenue Traffic Calming was being done.
I think that's under current review.
Okay, all right. Okay, very good.
Dallas.
Dallas.
Right, there is Dallas. I just wanted to make sure.
It's the street I drive on like twice every day. And then there were acronyms. Sorry to come back to acronyms, but there are TIs. Brian, I think you mentioned what's the acronym, the TI? Okay. Okay, but TI was tenant improvements. Okay, and then CUPs? Okay, all right. I didn't catch the eye. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I just at this point have maybe one specific question, and it's in regards to when I read about creating a proposed schedule of repairs and replacements for city owned assets. That's awesome. But I was just curious when when maybe there's an estimate, well, you sure get up and down estimate on when we might actually, you know, get that list or or an estimate of it.
So what we want to start off with is probably for a five year plan. And but given that the revenue situation now, we really need to take that into consideration. So that's why for the roofing project, I mentioned that we actually stopped being FY twenty six and can starting it in FY twenty seven.
Thank you very much.
Amy, if you just stay there for a moment, sir. I was trying to catch you before you got away. I had a question to ask. You mentioned earlier about speed bumps, and I know there's certain standards. If someone requests speed bumps, you have to go through and it has to qualify and so on. How expensive are those speed bumps to install? I mean, is that a separate budget item? I know we're going to talk about numbers later, but I just wanted to get the general feeling for that.
It's part of the traffic calming budget that we would cover the speed humps that get constructed. And they're getting to be more and more expensive. So we're probably looking at almost twenty thousand dollars speed home to get these because it all depends on the street too, on how much extra pavement work that we have to do.
I see. Do you think at sometime in the future, we'll have to sort of prioritize which speed bumps maybe take precedence over others? In other words, maybe those streets nearest schools, for example, would have the highest priority for speed bumps, for example, or something like that?
Yeah, and that's part of the work that we're going to be doing as as we review and perhaps revise the program. And so where areas that might take priority, such as near schools, near recreation center, you know, depending on where the destinations are. So those are the things that we want to look at. But what's good is that we now have a set of data for us to look at, like how many requests we've gotten, what we've installed.
Okay. And oh, the the speed bumps that we install now are more of those rolling speed bumps. They're not the sort of really bumpy speed bumps. They're the sort of gradual ones.
Yeah, they they actually need to follow the Santa Clara County Fire specs.
Okay, thank you.
Is that why we're calling them speed humps?
Humps, yes.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Humps instead of bumps.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I think this one will be for Rob. In regards to, I also read that we've talked about before, establishing a housing commission. So I kind of had the same question. I was curious what the estimate is on the initial work, like when we're going to truly begin that. And then when we do begin that, will council have initial input right away or will that be staff first? And then you come with us recommendations such as like who will actually be on this commission and what their main goals will be.
Good question. It probably is in the summer to fall timeframe. And our first step would be coming with you with initial options for discussion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Rob, I have a question for you also. And again, I know we're getting into numbers a little bit later, but you did mention some grants available for the Hamilton Precise Plan. Roughly, what is the match for the grants that we have so far for the Hamilton? What is our match requirement?
It's technically zero. It's a hundred percent funded by the I remember the great PDA planning grant that we obtained from MTCA bag. We have put some money into the contract for contingency. Sometimes grants go over, but but the city's match to that grant to prepare that plan is zero.
Well, that's good. And in that regard, same with the potential housing grants. You you kind of mentioned we might be eligible for some housing grants. Are they state or federal?
Good question. This is. And of course, on federally, you never know if they're available or not. They would. The one we will be pursuing probably first, we are on the cusp, I think, of getting our pro housing designation, rare opportunity, only one of perhaps twenty to forty jurisdictions in the state. Generally, that could avail us up to a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars of allocated funding into our housing program every year. So I think that's the first grant we look at. There's some others out there, but I know that's on the near term horizon.
Okay. And then finally, in addition to the Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan, there is also the citywide multimodal plan. I'm assuming, of course, then that with respect to multimodal, it's going to be carefully considered with respect to Hamilton precise, so that obviously they they match up appropriately for the long range thoughts in that regard.
Yeah, a lot of moving parts at once. The multimodal, so two different levels. The thought on the multimodal plan, step back, look at the entire city, look at our transit system, our bike system, our our street system, our pedestrian system, and just think holistically, what are the best opportunities to put improvements into bike, micro transit, maybe even a bus, to just help folks get around. So it's at a very broad policy level. Hamilton Avenue is at a more specific level and a look at specific improvements in that area. Of course, as both plans move forward simultaneously, we'll have to have staff coordinate to make sure there's no redundancies or conflicts.
Thank you. Brian, I had one other question for you. You talked about the gradual replacement of desktop computers. Will the computers that are replaced be replaced with other desktop? Is that still a part of the technology? So it will be. Okay, yes. Will the computers that are replaced be replaced with other desktop? Is that still a part of the technology? I do it, so it will be. Okay, yes. Those are my only questions. Any other questions by members of the council so far?
Sorry, I'm just gonna do a tech to jump in, but I I won't. I'll I'll let the the IT department make the make the decision on that.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna go on now to talk a little bit more about dollars and cents. And we'll have the staff presentation on the fiscal year twenty-sixth operating budget.
Right, uh Finance Director Will French is gonna lead us off on this discussion. And just for time check, um we are hoping just to pace this and. Uh maybe be done with the section by six thirty is our goal here with the sections. We'll present some operating budget and get council uh questions on this now.
Alright, um so I'll I'll attempt to uh I'll attempt to uh. Operations to here. Um and just um a a a hell through um a couple of. Key points. And. They're all um, they're all uh helpful. They're all um uh good things. Um but but um they also all um, they also all. Uh come, they also all come. Expenses um and also our um a a time um and also our uh. Our uh. So in 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 terms of a poorer jacket, a cost. But I had upon a what go, I am a no um today. Um in FY two. FY two, how do you say? Um it's in in the in also the. A general fund, it's about to. Of the point eight um 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 million in the. In total, um it um it uh it could um a certainly a change and it. A base come upon a based upon a a council. Also input um and also um a a current uh uh data. Um of a buy on the June third uh intro. Um but also in in a a a terms of a general, a general, general fund income. Um we're a a currently poor, we're currently poor, hijacked, I think, about us. About it's seven, a a point of six, a billion, a dollars in a total. Um and if if you uh take um of both um ex expenses. And income um to gather, um it 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 it. Equals um a half of a about to three point a a three point two, three point two, three point two million in. A total. Um the act um a a well um a a can. Adjust uh by the time that we um do on the June third intro. Um and also by the uh time um that we go go to adopt in the end of June. Um is the 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 um of of three point a a a two, two million. Um is 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 also um about uh about the same. Um that the I am poorer, that we poorer hijacked it. Brought our uh budget to our council a year ago in uh June. Um so it's almost um. Unchanges up there. Um it 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 does um also. Include a certain a wa- certain a wa- certain a hot time request, um certain a re. Recurring request and also uh personnel. Personnel request. Um uh but it 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 also. Excludes um of 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 a cause um adjustments uh to uh. Healthcare, um the uh yeah, yeah, the uh yeah, the yeah, the yeah. The yeah, the years of reserve funds. Um any of. Anything for anything from ARPA funds um and and also um any uh ex, any uh. Okay, as well. Um the there, the there are also um things that aren't, that aren't. Um a come, come, I believe, under our uh 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 control. Um is that is is that up, that 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 that? That um a a a go into and um. And Eric, the the they're also on things that the way I'm like, that we did. Uh discuss a well, I mean, a a put the budget to gather a year ago in. Uh June, so there's they're a bit. Uh changed. Um and um. They're um a s- a s- still either income or ex- 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 expense items. Um it's that um that a that that. Go into um is a a a total. A a total, a opposite amount. Um so partly, um our uh our our. Hiding a cost um can 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 need to uh increase. Um our insurance, sure, sure, uh 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 our insurance. I I insurance costs um also increase um and also um our. Ex- expenses, uh expenses for fire as well. Um but um there are also things that we are able to. Potentially uh do um to uh get over um the um. All um in the up, 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 upcoming year. Um and I'll turn it over to uh Brian to go through that a little bit more.
May I just ask you a brief question? I want to make sure summary wise, I just wanted to understand that. So. If we. If we assumed what we had hoped to plan for, the items listed there are full filing, uh decreased sipper and so on. That would result in the deficit of three point. So in other words, we have to make changes to what we had hoped would have been our assumptions. In addition to that, there are other significant factors, which obviously you had pointed out there. Sales tax loss, and that's not from really loss of a lot of businesses, but primarily from a major sales tax business to business. That's the big dent there. So it's not like the city is failing in its businesses. It's just really pretty much one business. And then obviously, every year, there's increased purse unfunded actuarial liability and uh. Increase in our insurance premiums. And of course, every year, there's a formula that we have to follow to increase the fire contract. So those expenses are almost. Fixed increases every year. And that all, all of those taken together contribute to the deficit. Which now you will start to. Indicate to us the potential cuts that you hope to make to bring it more into balance. Good, thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment on the sales tax loss. I hope that we're trying to approach uh that company as far as. As far as options. So the yeah, and I very much understand the technology of that that customers, that company is dealing with.
So, I have a question on the sales tax. So that um. The amount that's shown is four hundred eighty-seven. Is that due to the one business that's saving? Have we accounted for other retailers that have left the city um in in the in the? We've lost Big Lots, Trudy's, we've lost several restaurants. What what's the magnitude of that loss? Do we do we have a?
I had, I. I don't, um but I can uh cut that, but but I can get that also as well.
Thank you.
Alright, this next part is, uh I'm gonna take this and um. And there's been a lot of discussion in this area and we've spent a lot of time continuing to cut. On the expenditure side of the budget uh or or come up with proposed cuts for the council to consider. Uh these are things that have been vetted not only by my office and Will, uh but also with our executive team. On the impacts to them uh in their departments and their programs uh so that they can help articulate. What that's gonna mean uh when the council asks, what isn't gonna get done, that we all can describe that. Uh but these things here listed are things that we're asking for council's consideration of. Um and recognizing that if we did every single one of these things to the fullest extent, we may be able to balance the budget. But when I say may be may be able to balance a budget, I also recognize that these numbers that we develop are subject to change. And fine tuning. And I do know just from looking at this, it's not realistic to expect that all of these areas will get a hundred percent of the cost cutting. Uh that we anticipated, either because it's covered by another funding source, or because it's committed by contract. Uh or because it's a grant funding source that we uh misidentified as a general fund funding. So. We'll continue to revise those numbers, but what I really was hoping to do this evening is present these to the council. And get your feedback on the methodology and the process that we're using in order to make this budget match. The numbers will fine tune and and we'll we'll shake out and what we come to you in June will be a fully flushed out. Uh recommendation based on input this evening, but these are areas of consideration. Uh and primarily what I want to focus on when we're in a budget deficit is preserving services and preserving full-time positions. In the city. Uh our employees are one of our biggest assets and and we value them. And so uh they're also one of our biggest, the biggest extent, uh biggest expenses. Uh and so in this area, um. Uh you see that we're talking about a temporary hiring freeze. Uh if we were to push the pause button today. On anything that's not in active recruitment, uh and there's vacancies across all of our departments. Um we freeze those vacancies for the next fiscal year, we would save one point one nine million dollars. The next recommendation uh staff is is recommending for council's consideration is. Uh if we can't afford and we're freezing full-time staff positions, uh we should also be eliminating use of temp staffing. Uh primarily because those support our existing staff or serve in roles that would otherwise be covered by staffing. Uh and then also not listed here, but the elimination of contracts that would be providing staff services. Uh in areas that would normally be a staff function, with the idea that we want to preserve those jobs. Uh and we want to preserve services to the cities as much as possible. Um we have listed here a new office assistant staffing request, that's in my department, along with the clerk's office in HR and the clerk's office. And that's in lieu of uh an analyst position that is is remaining vacant. Uh and I wanted to highlight that is a limited term position. It says new office assistant, this isn't a permanent position. Use of the ARPA interest for environmental program specialists, we're doing a climate action adaptation plan, and it's not quite done yet. We had anticipated ARPA money to pay for that position. Um there's still some ARPA interest there uh in that position. Uh it would cover about half of the year for uh that position. Um and we're suggesting to use that interest for that purpose. Um consideration of the CalPERS Pension Reserve. I know um we are reticent to want to spend our reserves. We've already spent down reserves during the pandemic and those have not been replenished yet. Um and so this is not an area to take lightly. When we continue to spend from reserves, there is a pension reserve with a million dollars remaining in it. Uh and as you saw in the previous slide, our UAL, which is the uh unfunded actuarial liability. Actually went up by five hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's not to say that we have a five hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar payment. That's to say that our payments went up by five hundred fifty-eight thousand on top of what we're already paying. So that is the purpose of that fund. Um I think uh when we talk about Measure K and and bringing that uh and be hopefully being successful in that litigation. One of the primary funding mechanisms for Measure K will be replenishing those reserves that have been spent down. Uh and then um the last couple of areas are consideration deferral. Uh in your staff report, you have an attachment that lists. One-time requests. Um and the categorization of those requests um may be argumentative, whether or not it is. Uh discretionary or not, we tried to indicate in our thoughts what may be discretionary and what may not be. And I think we can all sit here and probably debate that. And some of those things will have to be refined. But in concept, uh if we were to defer uh those, most if not all of those one-time requests, it would save us seventy thousand. And then, of course, looking at recurring requests, these are requests that will repeat, that aren't just for one year, that will go on and on and on. Um and again, it's not likely that we're gonna be able to defer all of those, but if we deferred some. Uh i- if not most of those, it would equate to six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Um and I I really didn't intend tonight to be a mental math exercise for the council where you're having to connect the dots and say, well, if I don't do. The one million dollar reserve, how do we find that extra million? It's really there to show you the order of magnitude of what we think will save. We will fully flush these out. Um when I say that we made uh some assumptions for the one-time cost and reoccurring costs. About what was discretionary or not, we will go back through those. There are some things that are covered by grant funds that are completely discretionary that we've committed matching funds to. Uh there are some things that we may have entered into contracts for that 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 the term of those contracts hasn't come closed yet. Uh and there may be some things that uh that we choose not to defer because they're important uh to the community or the council. Uh and so recognizing that, I was hoping this evening, um when we get to council. Uh comments that I'll get some feedback from you on that system that we just laid out here in all of those areas. If there's an area that you're concerned about, for instance, utilization of the CalPERS pensions, or we want to hear that from you. So we can take that feedback and know that we still have work to do between now and June because we're not gonna be using that million dollars to help bridge our gap. Uh so those are the thoughts that I wanted to put forward. Um I I do want to say uh when we talk about the hiring freeze. Um that those are spread across every department. Uh no department is immune from that. Um and so we're uh are feeling the pain equally. I do think uh that uh public safety. Uh and officers are really in a different category when we get to vacancies for officers. Those are things that that we continue to need to fill. But for the most part, what we're talking about is uh our our more administrative positions. Uh and they uh are across each of the departments. I know we're not listing those positions this evening because we want to get council feedback. On those uh that concept. And if we move forward with that, we will fully list both for the council and for public transparency. Those positions that are subject to that hiring freeze uh in the June third uh presentation. So with that, uh I'm gonna pause just for a second and take questions on that. Uh and then uh if uh we're complete with those questions, we'll move into public comments. Uh and then come back for council feedback uh on what was presented today.
So on the chart, um you have listed some deferral of the one-time requests and the recurring requests. How is that gonna be determined? Who makes that decision?
I'm sorry. So I'll be making the recommendation. It'll be based on feedback you give me. If there's areas in there, I didn't go through item by item, but if in your feedback, you give me feedback, there's areas of concern, we'll highlight those and bring, make sure that we call those out in the next discussion in June. But I will be vetting those with Will and I will be making my recommendations based on what I know, based on the criteria kind of highlighted here today. Whether it's discretionary or not, we need to fine tune some of those things. And then I will be presenting that on June 3 to the council with my recommendations on, on what those look like. But certainly encourage your feedback. If there's areas of concern, something you see that is questionable, by all means, I certainly want council feedback in those areas.
So would now be the time to discuss individual items on, on these two attachments or?
Yes, if I understand correctly, we're just taking questions right now and then council later.
It is question.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, please.
Why it's on there? On schedule, the first schedule, the one time, the, the second item on there is miscellaneous office monitors and equipment for community development staff. Why is that a separate item? If we have a work plan item to replace IT or IT as a work plan item, we're proposing a work plan item to replace computers. Why is that separate or not included in the overall IT strategy? That's one question I have.
So that is probably one of those that we'll have to take a look at and its appropriateness there. We, we are still for basic workstations, laptops or budgeting those by department, but we, we just talked about this today with our exec team. They'll be specked out and purchased by IT, but they'll be charged to each department. They're actually asking for a $20,000 increase and that's one of the things that it will probably be looking at, whether or not that can be cut.
Okay. And then the last two items on there, replace carpet and paint. It's listed as hazardous, a hazardous condition to me, in my mind, hazardous condition. There shouldn't be any discussion about whether it's discretionary or not. It should be handled. So I would think that that just would, would be something that shouldn't be deferred. And then on the next recurring, and I had shared some of the, my questions with the city manager on this. The one item that kind of stands out in the PD is the, the, the year review. To me, that's not a new, new fee. That, that's something that has been an ongoing expenditure in the PD budget for several years since I've been on the council. So I'm curious as to why that's on there. And again, to me, the PD communications overtime should, to me, that's critical to operations and there shouldn't be any flexibility in that. It should, there should be, that should be funded.
So you're, you're, you're probably right on all of those accounts. And, and as I started this with, you know, some of the descriptions that we have in there could probably be better descriptors and maybe are a little misleading the way that they're worded for sure. And a couple of you pointed out whether discretionary or not, those are the sort of things we're going to have to vet through. I do agree that communications overtime is necessary, especially if we have vacancies there and that probably isn't discretionary. So we've developed this, we're vetting, constantly going back and re-vetting. Those are ones that, that you and I already talked about and I would agree probably aren't necessarily discretionary in those areas. And certainly the description of the, the yearly, year-end review is not a new request. That's, that added cost to an old line item, but not primarily because of that year-end review. It's some other things there. So again, the descriptor probably can be refined to actually describe that a little bit more accurately.
So when it comes back to council in June, will there be a better?
Yes, we will refine those. That would, that would be my intent and I apologize that you haven't asked those questions tonight because as we put this together, there's a lot there. And I frankly had every staff member saying, well, we could correct this, we can correct that. And we're frantically trying to get to this meeting with where we're at, but knowing that there's some additional work in those areas. So we will refine those, especially the ones you mentioned specifically.
Technically comments, but a couple of questions, I should say, but whatever you think.
Yeah, not really question, but first of all, I wanted to make a comment to the public. You know, I think we can all thank Campbell, the voters of Campbell for coming out and overwhelmingly voting for measure K. This budget deficit is by no means the fault of council or staff, but it's something we're having to deal with obviously due to the litigation. Anyhow, with that said, we're hoping this is very temporary, but we do have to bridge the gap. So that's why we're here right now. I am nervous about pulling a million dollars from the pension reserves. I mean, I know the reserves, but it just makes me really nervous and I don't know about the rest of you, but it seems like the dark clouds are gathering or, you know, like I've had enough economic catastrophes in my not so short life already. And I just feel like, oh, any day now, you know, everything's going to fall to pieces. I hope I'm wrong, but, but so my point is I, I feel nervous about pulling from those reserves. And so instead I'm hoping maybe by June, I would really like to see, and I know this is work and I apologize for this, but more line items that are much smaller, that won't affect critical services. You know, I would really like to see a list of something. And I know we probably, it's very unlikely we'll find that million dollars in the smaller line items, but I really wanted to see if we can look at more, whatever it may be within the budget that are smaller line items that we can pull from to try and compensate. And, you know, you know, I'd be shocked if we get anywhere near that million dollars, but if we can at least help, you know, you know, get a chunk of it. So it's not as dramatic that we pull from, from that pension reserve. Thanks.
Yeah, a couple of questions on the, the estimated genial funds. The, the 1.19 million, what does, what does the general fund end up being on that? Sorry, pointed out the typo too. But what, what is the, what's the general fund percent end up being with this proposal?
I'm sorry, what, what, what item were you referring to again, if you don't mind? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Oh, temporary hiring.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're talking about our reserve level as a percentage of our general fund?
Just the general fund percentage. Yes.
Yeah.
That number that's supposed to get between 16 to 25%.
Yeah, it's 24%.
And this would be, it would maintain at 24% with this proposal?
If you can.
Yes, if everything. Yeah. Okay. All right. So good. Good. Thank you. Want to be able to manage, manage that general fund so that we, that was hammered into me at the, in the conferences. I too share the, a great concern with the, with the council member Scizola on the, of the CalPERS pension reserve. I've shared also a couple of times that I'm still trying to understand it. What, let me ask it this way. If we pull from the million from the general CalPERS fund and I don't want to presume anything, but just trying to do the planning, measure K doesn't happen. What would that general, what would the CalPERS end up being? Zero?
Yeah, a million dollars is what we have left in that reserve.
Yeah. See, that, that's just to me, that seems very risky to be able to do that. I know that we have a 75, 70% voter approval on measure K, but it's in litigation. So I, I want us to be able to be in a situation where we're working from a positive standpoint in the event of it getting, you know, not a desperate standpoint in a, in the event of it not happening. So very strongly concerned about that pension programs, every, you know, every city employee is, you know, looking forward to that and, and, and planning for it. We need to, we need to be able to, to manage to that. And so I, I really want us to be able to, now let me ask you on, because I'm still trying to understand CalPERS. With the million dollars, is that the right amount to have in the reserve fund?
Well, we would love to have more because CalPERS is very volatile in the way that they charge, unpredictable in the way that they charge their premiums, although they do average it out over the years, but ideally we would have a little bit more comfortable reserve or pay down our unfunded liability. Some, you know, some combination of those at the right balance for the city.
And what's our unfunded liability now? That the?
I don't have that exact number. We'll present that on June 3 to you. But we're.
But the unfunded liability is included in the budget numbers now?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Okay.
I just don't know what our total.
That's why it was, that was more the clarifying question is that, is it included in our numbers that we have right now?
It's the unfunded liability for UAL, but it's not the total unfunded liability. Okay.
Yeah. I think, but again, I, I apologize as I'm explaining to staff that I'm still trying to understand our, the financials associated with, with CalPERS in there. And so these are clarifying questions, but, but it just, you know, emphasizing to take a reserve down to zero on something that we're dependent on just feels very business from an insecurity from a business financial standpoint. And I have other comments that I'll make.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add that I too have a concern that is expressed by council members Scizola as well as Hines about utilizing the remaining CalPERS reserve. I don't think you're proposing that we use all 1 million. I think you're proposing that if we did, it would be about half that amount, but still that would leave a very small balance. So I am concerned about that. In, in that regard, I, I did take a look at the fiscal year 26 capital projects, the CIP, to see if there were any items I would suggest there that we might look at. However, some of the more expensive items that I thought about happen to be funds that are not part of the general operating budget. They are special park funds, for example. So I thought, for example, we might be able to slow down the pool replacement. I know it needs to be done, but I thought we could save some money there. Then I thought, well, perhaps the restroom improvements on Bud Avenue, even though we want to do them, it's very expensive. Maybe we could slow that down a bit, but apparently that is not general operating money. It is park money, which is a separate pot of money. So anyhow.
And we're going to present the CIP here in just a moment.
Okay.
But the thought was if we're done with questions, let's take public comment and then we'll come back. I'm sorry, before we take public comment, let's present the CIP, take public comment. And then we'll come back.
Okay.
So we're going to move then into CIP in our assistant finance director or is Norbert Vong is going to lead this discussion along with our interim public works director Amy Boley. Thank you.
Good evening, council. As you're aware, our five-year CIP encompasses the fiscal year 2026 through 2030. And the CIP as a whole encompasses 76 projects over this five-year period amounting to just over 102 million dollars. Before today, we're requesting, not requesting, but rather we have an additional 17.6 million dollars of projects included in the, in this five-year CIP, which encompasses, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor Fertato, the community center board placement project, which is a $12 million project that we're projecting for fiscal 26 and 27, but is funded solely by park fees and potential debt issuance. Another, another large project that we have as part of the 17.5 million dollars is our annual street maintenance project for fiscal year 30, which as you're aware of, is majorly funded by external funding sources. The amount that comes towards that project from CIPR is just $200,000 of the 3.3 million dollars that we're projecting. The remaining 3.1 is funded solely by external funding sources. And that's how we're leveraging CIPR and general fund monies to move forward with some of these capital projects, as you've already noticed. So our CIP project encompasses 1.2, 102 million dollars, 17 million dollars of it is new projects that we're projecting for future out years. And we have about 85 million dollars of existing capital projects at the moment of that 85 million dollars, as you're aware, about 44 million dollars of it is from Mezaro. Another big component of the 85 million dollars is the annual street maintenance program, which is about 23, 24 million dollars. That's already programmed within the CIP for the period of fiscal year 26 through fiscal 30. And our projected CIP expenditures for fiscal year 2026 is 9.2 million dollars. That number may sound high, but of that 9.2 million dollars, only 700,000 of that is from the general fund. The remainder of it are funding sources that we've leveraged again from external funding sources, whether that be grants, whether that be park fees, gas tax. And, and so as, as a team, but staff did look into potential opportunities to reduce general fund funding needs towards a capital program. And we were able to do that. And of course, you know, of the 9.2 as mentioned, only 700,000 of it comes from the general fund. I also wanted to provide council an update to previously approved projects as well as it compares to what was approved last fiscal year during this budget cycle process. As listed here, four of the annual street maintenance projects, funding, funding appropriations increased by roughly 100,000 to 400,000 dollars. Those increases are fully offset by an increase in vehicle impact fees that come from solid waste impact fees increases. There is also an increase to the civic center improvement shared cost project of 224,000 dollars funded by grants, bonds, ARPA monies to fund the salary to benefits and personnel costs of our senior project manager for Mezaro for fiscal year 26. And then there are two additional increases to our JDM improvement risk con, ring con design project as well as JDM restroom improvement bud project of 100,000 and 906,000 respectively, both funded by park fees. And in the fourth bullet, staff also wanted to, to bring to your attention the, the number of unfunded projects or unfunded items that we have in our unfunded list amounts to 118 million dollars. Last year, we reported a number of 98 million dollars. So that's increased by 20 million roughly. Of that 20 million dollar increase, there are four new projects that we listed on packet page 46, but also a good portion of that increase is also related to deferred street maintenance that we have within the city that increased by 20 million dollars as presented by the public works department at an earlier study session earlier this year. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We also have our interim public works director as well.
By the council with respect to the CIP.
Yes. I just had a question on the annual street maintenance. Certainly your, when we were talking about the street maintenance, there was levels that we were trying to get. I can't remember the number that we were trying to get to. Is that in the budget to get to that number?
I think you're talking about the pavement.
Yeah, the CI. The way we have it right now, it does not take into consideration an increase. So when we're complete with the Hamilton project, the PCI currently is 66, but when we're done with the Hamilton project, we're going to be looking at a 68 PCI. And so the funding that we have here, because for us to maintain a PCI of 68, we would require 10 million dollars a year. And that's not what we have programmed here. We just increasing the 100,000 that we talked about right during the study session. If council had the interest for us to look at getting additional funding for vehicle impact fees and we were able to do so through the solid waste program.
Thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't appear that we have any other comments. I would say if, you know, in the future, although you explained it very well, if when the CIP is presented, it could be separated out between. If when the CIP is presented, it could be separated out between those funds that are subject to, you know, special. Special funds and those that are general operating funds, that would be a little helpful, but that's just a comment, but I appreciate everything so far. So with that, I think what I'm going to do now is we're going to take public comment and then we're going to take a brief break. So I have one card that was submitted to me by Carlos Duran. Please come forward.
Good evening, council members, my name is Carlos Duran, I'm a field representative with the NorCal Carpenter Union and also a lead negotiator for labor negotiations. For the city employees in the parks, streets, mechanics and lights departments. I'm here to address the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget and express our serious concern about. The suggestion to postpone cost of living adjustments or your acronym COLA for city employees. We recognize the city's financial challenges, especially the measure K litigation. However, making city employees bear the brunt of these issues is unfair, but also shortsighted. City employees are the backbone of this community and provide essential services that residents rely on every day. We deserve fair compensation, especially given raising living costs. Freezing our wages is not the solution and will have negative consequences. Like harm to employee morale and retention ultimately impacting service quality. Like reducing employee spending power hurting the local economy. Alameda County, thank you Angelique for that information, dealt with a similar lawsuit with their measure W, which lasted approximately four years. According to my research, despite that significant legal challenge, Alameda County did not postpone any wage or benefit increases for its public employees. Alameda County found alternative solutions recognizing the value of their workforce. Campbell can and should do the same. The budget documents themselves suggest several possibilities, for instance. Capital improvement plan, the CIP, that includes projects that could be deferred or re-sculpted, like 20,000 speed home. Maybe there's cheaper ways to install it, I'm not sure what the scope of work is there, but I'm sure there's cheaper speed homes out there. Conducting or like conducting a thorough line item operating budget review or maximizing grant opportunities, which I heard mentioned today at this meeting. And efficiency measures, can I conclude? Thank you, in conclusion, we urge the council to reject postponing COLA increases and instead direct staff to thoroughly explore. Responsible alternative budget adjustments that respects the city's dedicated employees. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Duran. Does there, it doesn't appear there's anyone else in the council chamber, is there anyone online? No persons online. Sorry about that, I will close the public comment on this item. Just take a very short five minute break because we're going to have to start the council meeting pretty soon and there's, leaves very little time for the council comments. So just a short break, thank you.